Can we do the crown? You guys have been discussing. You guys know what we're doing in the town of Perth? If you have to go to the ground, you're ready. Two five. Okay. This is from. Have to hear me.
All right, can I switch to the manna? Um, we were at our last one next week. Um, people that happened. Um, I thought we had a lot planned, um, city centers, um, returning to the band and, Scott's and Ariel performing. Um, communication committee, um, we had six or seven people on the head field. Some are great folks. The homes with all the businesses, forty other groups that are both downtown. I mean, I know that was Friday afternoon of all of them. So, um, it is. Are so many people getting this through our doors. Going inside, talking to them. Like that, so. So I'm having this down. But I'll be brought this from last time, say, kind of long as the end of the day, so. Point is for the first five. Um, um. We offer the entry status, it's the biggest. Focusing on the power of second. On September twenty second here. More of its safe. That's part of the customs. Um, we get some feedback on stuff, so, um, sorry. Voting theory has actually done. All did have a member provider have. Two hundred, yeah, two hundred dollars. Um, so that was going to say. And we have a final plan and a problem. All right, which I didn't know they were too early, um, yeah. Because all the other problems, oh, yeah. And. Uh, okay, I think I have a problem. You had a class on Friday, you mean there's corned. You got everybody trying to celebrate. And that was. So that's so long, which is about. And, um, today you have the revised Department of Arts company. You were working fine. It's a little over a year, but she's fine when it has all her. So it's a completely different. I mean, some of the questions. I'm gonna act like I'm, I'm gonna say. That's why if you, um, that won't hit, but it's like a. Not necessarily the first one I remember, but for. I don't work that. And then it just goes in. It says that you get signed over.
That would be, but if it's hard to.
Or.
Do you think we. Do you think we can harm?
Want to talk about it?
The first.
How long was it on the calendar? Oh, no, that's fine, yeah. I'll have that the time.
Whatever you think so. Yeah, I don't, I don't want to play that way for.
It's time to make you all. I don't like the sun.
Oh, no, 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 just.
Thank you very much. It was great. We're in the library. Okay, um, I'm. On summer event. July, uh, and then the dinner, white and yellow, and it was after year, the Y D. All right. Well, thank you for listening. Any questions?
I'm going. What do you. Would be, I don't have any. You and. We've got it. Everything. I have to. In the. Open. The pandemic, I'm not going to read the office stats, these were four something. Of that page. But the more. Probably death around the grid. When it was just. A little bit. Always think. What should it be? It's also five K on it. This is what they do. They're not. They're one. They're not support. But also the. Fourth of September. It also lost the squad. Something about the. Once in charge of the coffee. It's great, it can start. But it's. It was the. They're not saying good. That's what we want to run. It's, it's, we'll, we'll be going up in Facebook. Something to speak. There was this birthday on this phone that kind of. Personally gathered that it happened. Sorry, system, all the time. From gathering certain. Not always a. Obviously, most active. We also can put phones in camera, want to. Usually shopping with. Want to. Starting with. You need to come in with everyone. I hope I'm not. Give you a problem, you might, you are. Fortunately, we recognize that. From primary medical nursing. And at the park. It's important. When the student job, they just. It's blocked, it's blocked, somebody's. They're back. They're in the same position. The new. The medical. Right, right. The pandemic. If I. First. Most. We're learning that. Um, overall, we've got. Really. He could. The next one. Now, let's take. And then we. Just pulling the. Perhaps that starts. So that can be. Could be. That's what we. We should. We should. Yeah, the. That was, but that was. I think they don't like that. We'll see that. Look hard, hard to me, so it's somebody. Okay. Um, we, we. We've been in contact with, uh, the place of company. Back as of now, so. Right now, we're still in there. Left, you know. We are.
Very much thankful for this bond, I thought we needed to get. I don't know so well, if I say what I was. And I was like. I thought you were. Now I'm putting a card. I've seen you now, see.
Okay.
You know, it gets a little bit rough. At this point. Needing. Where the highest. So.
Why do you?
Yeah, Bruce Diamond, so we.
Yes, thank you, um. That's a good one. For two of them, like. Also, the first one. Is a condition we used to have. Start. Through the right of the star. So. That'll probably. Second. Pretty handbook. I think it's coming to fruition. So we break it out, so. Should be. If we. Now, I mean, there we go.
Federal blocker report. Then on the. Rapping did. So number one, in most. I finished the one. The honor is there. Have it at your seat. Um, it's preliminary, uh, we start in next Sunday, have a meeting, um. A public meeting. Do you start eating through it? It's mostly balanced, but there are some areas where you. Off and that's. This is a reckless state scenario. So all unexpected. One. So if there, please review it, um, next people dig into it and look. Yeah, um, whatever means. Like a rough date. Um, if you talk on my screen, it's also will be three hundred percent. I think it's probably. I'm good for that. Um, other is, there's no, um. Last Tuesday. I'm returning to support that on. You know, all often running, everything is. One, two, three. Is it? It was supposed to be your manager there. Um, because a lot of great ideas to help with the graph where you said. I think there was a lot of. So the day being super proactive, our team more. Wonderful, I love them. We did hire a chief superintendent. Um, she will be. But. And is retiring. He retired last year. But the Uber app. Um, the. Um, the person that we hired is coming to try some time this time. So she's another area from the. This is. She also has. As soon as they. These. Actually. And we started. Then why is. So. Um, another thing is all of you have a newsletter at the back. Uh, we always get them before. I think they get through the mailboxes, so. I guess the office for this second. Certainly in the mail. I don't see. Our probably. Probably. You know, really nice. Are advertising by spending. Well, um. We remember from. So, um, we call the. Um, we've been watching for it. Up to the point where I was like. We can move and add. You know, the. But we're really thankful for, um, the support that. Um. I don't know.
I'm. They call it. You're talking to my friends. Um, yeah, we're, we're going with that and so.
I have a meeting with the Hilltown manager tomorrow, which we talked about. Unless he's not familiar with these, who at all, so. Or we want to get some of the questions.
Questions. And then the. Yep. And. Here we see. Maybe by. But there was. Um, but it's. I came up. Special. Um, the speed of these things are like. Not stop. I never see one stop. And I was sitting in Washington. Um, so. It's quite. It's. You know, I hear it. But I think it's. The fine, right? I think, uh, speed is. Twenty. While. And then. Um, the speed of. It's. I'm. But. Yeah. There we go. And. The very question. What's gonna happen, but speed is. I'm just. Topic I was. There's something right now. The. The potion. That works. You. Your nation state. You. At the. What is. Make a. There's no. Well. Wait. This is. Public safety. You must have. Step one. Saying exactly what you. Probably. Probably not. Down. That was step one, but that part we don't use. About two weeks ago, we've got a Facebook. There would be. Everybody. It's. If it is. A little bit. It is the same. Also going to come out. Say every two. Now. So for a common sense. That's a lot. Always doing. And do so. Too loud. Yeah, yeah. I've not been. Too much. It can actually, actually. But it's. Try. I don't. What. People. We got. And this. You. That means that right on the work farm. And real. There are these swords brought by and form and base direction. They're. They're really. It was. I hear you about. This will be. Thank you. That's. That. If they say. If there was almost a hundred. There. In there. We played my. We were doing. It's. Pretty much that country. You want. I don't want. Your point. If you. If you. Sort of. Everything becomes everything. Yeah, these. And you're. Yeah. So far, it's. It's. You don't have anybody. You're. And I think. I. Yeah. 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 For all the. Hopefully. It's not the. Not well. It's. It's a. Yeah.